We're all here. While we're doing this, I can work on the camera stuff itself. So, we don't need to do anything formal tonight. If you would like to do the pledge of allegiance, we can. This is just a work session, so we can get right into the conversation. Or we can go through the formal roll call, whichever it would be.
You'll do the pledge allegiance? I think that's always a good idea. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with a great injustice for all.
Sorry. So. Before us tonight is a presentation for, we're going to talk about the statewide planning process, and how it connects with all of the planning procedures that we do at the city level. And so to do that, because I am so utterly prepared this evening, we're going to have John, our rare student, do a big portion of the presentation, and I will be here to add in color in my lovely comedy that I never add in. So, let me get the PowerPoint presentation put up, and we can get it started. Is the red on?
I think so, but then again, I have foggy glasses and bad eyesight to begin with.
John and I will take our masks off, so that you can hear us clearly. When you guys would like to speak or ask questions, feel free to take your masks off. But, at this point, John, go ahead and take it away.
Yeah, I'll make this as quick and easy as possible for everyone. So, we'll zoom right through, and go and start. We're basically just going to go over the statewide planning goals, a little bit of their context and history, and the ones that are prevalent to Lebanon. In summation, the context and history behind what the statewide planning goals are. Throughout the 60s and 70s, Oregon experienced a rapid population growth. A lot of the farmland was being converted to urbanized land. And to respond to this, legislators created, well, in the 60s, they came up with Senate Bill 10 to try and curb this, but there was nothing within that legislation that actually enforced the restrictions on urbanization of farmland. So, in '73, they passed Senate Bill 100, which created the statewide planning goals, and the LD CD, and I hope I got the acronym right.
LCD.
LCD, I give up every time. Yeah, mild dyslexia doesn't help. But essentially, what this did was create, most importantly, the urban growth boundaries, and then set out 19 planning goals for Oregon based on conservation, eventually equity, and preserving Oregon's natural state, and limiting urban sprawl. Sprawl, the words are hard. How this works is, within those 19 goals, municipalities, localities are required to have a comprehensive plan that aligns with those 19 goals, the ones relevant to them anyways. And from that comprehensive plan, each locality draws out and creates policies that will enhance their urban growth boundaries, their areas, and in turn, enhance the state as a whole. How this is done is through our lovely development code and zoning codes, which implement the policies outlined within the comprehensive plan, and ensure that all these goals are met, and everything is in tip-top shape for the state, and we don't have any problems with them.
SB 100 and SB 10 also was the action that created the urban growth boundary, which is why we have the planning schemes that we have today, where you have the very clear designated cities, and then immediate farmland and forest land. And that was for the preservation of the farm and forestry within the state. The key thing to take away from this is that the state sets the tone of what cities shall care about, and that's through the statewide planning goals that they have. But through the comprehensive plan, the city gets to add its layer of, yes, we shall care about this, but we also want to care about these specific local goals as well. So, the comprehensive plan gives the city its voice through the scheme of the development code and the comprehensive plan code, while also ensuring that we meet the statewide planning goals. And so, the comprehensive plan gives us the ability to set policy on where and how we build housing and commercial development and industrial development. That's the city level that we get to have of how we pursue it. But we still need to ensure that through every action that we take, we are meeting the statewide goals as well. Yes. So, the state sets policies and goals, right? And we'll go through each one, but for example, one of them is the housing goal. So, the state says that each city needs to provide sufficient housing for your community and the anticipated growth within your community. So, you do what's called a housing needs assessment. And in 2019, the city started the process to put one of those together, and will be adopting it sometime next year. That housing needs assessment evaluates your population growth, your trends, the type of housing that's needed to accommodate the population you have now, and the anticipation of the population in the future. And then you look at your land and go, okay, of the buildable land inventory, are we able to accommodate that in our current development code? If we're not, well, you have to look at either increasing the densities within your current development code to get there. And even if you're in a tight pinch, and that's not even going to work to where it's a still livable community aspect, you have to go through a process to say, you don't have the buildable land to accommodate your need, and therefore, you need to go through an urban growth boundary expansion. That's a trigger of you need to do it. There's other triggers of how to amend an urban growth boundary, where if we have certain lands that are completely inundated with wetlands, and they're just not getting developed, but we know that there's other lands that's adjacent to the city, but outside of our urban growth boundary, we can do an amendment of that boundary to sort of swap the land to still be, you know, like-for-like acreage, but different type of land to be able to further accommodate it. So, there are ways to amend the urban growth boundary. It's onerous, it's time-consuming, it's expensive, it's controversial, it's political, depending on how and why you're doing it. And so, not a lot of cities have had to update the urban growth boundary since the 1980s, when it was first set and established with the comprehensive plans. But there are some cities that are going through it. I think it's the city of Newburgh has been trying to do it for the last 10 years, and they've been having troubles. The city of Adair Village is currently going through an expansion of theirs. It's just a timely process to do it, so. Any other questions?
The majority of this is just going through the goals that are relevant to Lebanon, and lists of their comprehensive plans, and the ones that are relevant from statewide planning goals. So, for example, goals 1 and 2 of the statewide planning goals are citizen involvement and land use.
Nothing. Keep going.
Land use planning. And I wrote out a lot of words. I'm not going to say all those words. Of examples of how that relates to Lebanon through the comprehensive plan, and then examples of how that is implemented. So, basically, with our comprehensive plan, we determine how we have the land use planning done. And for citizen involvement, we have things such as the Planning Commission, and allowing citizens to come and speak on their own behaves in city council meetings. It allows them to become involved in the planning process, and determine how the city grows as well. We can go through these really quick.
Yeah, so, for the citizen involvement, that's why you guys are here. You are the board that gives the voice to the public. You are the board that gets to listen to the positives and negatives associated with the public. But you are the board that also gets to take the comments from the public and turn it into a change in policy or a different policy. We do that through comprehensive plan amendments and updates. We do that through policy changes and development code updates as well. And so, the citizen involvement process is a multiple-phase process through every single planning procedure. But a lot of it goes through you. So, you guys have the hefty requirements of listening to the public and trying to figure out what it is that is going to be best for the public based off of those comments. Any questions on those two goals so far?
I've had a couple of comments from people about about what the city of Lebanon is building up to be. And it seems like, you know, I couldn't disagree with them. It seems like we're building all these apartment complexes, and we're just popping them out one after the other, but we're not building single-family dwellings. And a lot of, I think a lot of people are concerned, I know a couple of them are, about the trend that Lebanon's going. So, what does all this, how does that fit in with making those kind of decisions? For example, if somebody comes in, they say, well, we want to do another apartment complex. And we say, well, you know, we'd rather see single-family homes. How do you approach that? I mean, is there anything that, as far as the Planning Commission goes, is there anything that we can do to say, well, hey, you know, maybe, single-family dwellings is the way that we want to trend, instead of trending towards nothing but apartment complexes? Because what we're becoming is a city of renters and temporary housers, and, you know, not permanent residents, and, you know, not established citizens. You know, we're basically a city of temporary citizens, when we have nothing but apartment complexes. And I have to agree with them on that. So, how does all this fit in with that?
So, I understand the perception that that's all that's been going on. It's not, but it is a major component of what is being developed. And there's several reasons for that that we can talk about. But in the context of this process, the decision of the type of housing, the decision of where it goes, and the decision of the policies all tie back to the statewide planning goals and the comprehensive plan. Statewide planning goal says that we need to provide sufficient housing for all segments of the population to serve within the city of Lebanon. That's, you know, single-family homes, that's townhomes, duplexes, renters, low-income housing, mobile homes, and even the houseless. And we have a responsibility, per the statewide planning process, to accommodate housing for all portions of the population. So, the housing needs assessment that was done in 2019 says that the city needs to accommodate over 550 apartment units as part of the housing needs assessment. Well, we've made strides greatly in the last couple of years to accommodate those numbers of apartment units. The other things to think about as part of why the trend is right now is apartments is, before these apartments were being built, the vacancy rates of the apartments that we had in the city were extremely low, to the point where there was no apartment housing stock available. So, people who lived in single-family homes and was paying a price that they couldn't afford in a single-family home, they didn't have the option to move to a potentially more affordable apartment unit, because there wasn't any available. Now, you're having a boom of apartment units, and that's accommodating a need associated with the university. The university just expanded to include another segment or school, which is providing 400 new students. Those 400 new students need to be housed. Those 400 new students by nature are transient-type students who are going to live here during their tenure at the school, and then they're going to go wherever they're going to be able to get their jobs. So, the dynamic of the city is changing to accommodate the university, so you need to provide housing to accommodate that segment of the population as well. The other aspect of it is infrastructure. There's big portions of the city, to the south end of the city, where there's large swaths of land that are available for residential development, that don't have the infrastructure there. And so, the city is making strides to build the infrastructure, to open that land up for development. And when you get nice swaths of large acreage, that is far more conducive to single-family home subdivisions than small four- or five-acre lots in different portions of the city. And so, the reason why you're seeing apartment units right now is because there's a need, because there's an expansion in the university, because there needs to be an opportunity for all segments of the population to live in different types of housing units, because we don't have the land available to accommodate large subdivisions. And because the housing needs assessment bears out that you need it. And so, the development code and the zoning identifies that you have large areas of residential mixed-density zoning, which allows for, if you have property large enough, apartments, single-family homes, and duplexes, and everything in between, to co-mingle together. But because of all those other factors, you're not seeing as many single-family subdivisions right now, because the need and the demand is for a different type of housing. You do have subdivisions that are occurring currently. We've approved 120 units for single-family homes in the last year and a half. That's quite a few. For apartment units, we've approved 440. That's quite a lot. But you're seeing housing built all over the place. But through this system, the state says you need to provide housing for all. The housing and needs assessment, which is required by the state, identifies the type of housing and the amount of housing that's needed. And then our development code needs to provide the opportunities for those housing units to be created, which is why you have the residential mixed-density zone, which is why you have those different development standards. The reason why you're seeing more of one than the other right now is because of all of those market factors that are outside of the development code and the comprehensive plan that's dictating it. We have a large sewer project underway currently. Water is generally far more available right now in those areas than sewer, but you still are going to need to pull water utilities as well. So, it's not going to be an overnight switch that's going to turn on for those properties to the south, but it's going to be far more accessible and available for developers to be able to accommodate the infrastructure needs of building one utility versus building all utility. They are private swaths of land. The city is not in the business of building. But we do not have the capacity or the desire to do that. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, that was a nice, long answer.
Sorry.
No, it's good info, I think.
A lot of good information, thank you.
I will be quiet.
No, you don't have to be.
There's one other element, I just might throw it in, kind of speak to that. To developers, it's all about the bottom line. So, you get a small piece of property, and it makes a lot more sense to them to put up 50, 60, 100, 120 units rather than eight or 10 houses. And there's a lot less infrastructure, much smaller footprint. So, that's kind of the route that they go. Especially McKinney Lane is a really good example. Those apartments that we just approved, what was it, two years ago?
Yeah.
Well, next to the tracks.
Yeah. Part of that was wetlands, but there was a small area, or half an area, that was upland. So, rather than try to delineate and do the cut-and-fill permits, all that good stuff on the wetlands, they could put the adequate amount in the upland and not have that expense. So, it really comes down to the bottom line for the developer.
I know. Anything else on these two goals that you guys have questions on? I think I skipped one.
No, no, this is what's next, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, of the 19, only 12 are relevant. And we don't have agriculture and forests or Lebanon. But we have goals 5 and 6, which are related to natural resources and air and water quality. And essentially, what these goals are focused on is, pretty openly stated, air and water quality and preserving natural spaces. And for Lebanon, that includes like our riparian impact protection zone. My words all over the place. Riparian protection zone, like Tito Lake, preserving that, working on increasing the water quality, vegetative channels, like cleaning up in Mark Slu, things like that. And through protecting and preserving these places, it actually, there's studies on increased health benefits, but also increases recreation, tourism, and public happiness in general, because everyone loves to go to a park, at least in Oregon, not where I'm from. It's too hot where I'm from. I'll go through these as quickly as y'all desire. Goal 7 is related to natural hazards. For the comprehensive plan, this mostly lays out our involvement in the Lebanon Emergency Management Plan, and how we interact with the Oregon Emergency Response System and Lynn County in general, in case of an emergency. And the comprehensive plan puts forth our goals and policies, such as having these plans in place. And then we have these plans to actually implement the comprehensive plan's goals. Handles how we deal with fires, floods. I don't actually know what happens in Lebanon as far as natural hazards.
Floodplains are also included as part of this goal. So, we have quite a few areas associated with rivers and creeks that fall within the floodplain area. So, we have, I think it was about a year and a half ago, we adopted an updated floodplain ordinance per FEMA standards. We have a designated floodplain manager, which is myself, that has to review any projects within the floodplains to make sure that they are compliant, to be able to get a property, to be able to have insurance if there is a flood or anything like that. So, they're designed in a way in which they can be preserved if there is a flood event. So, that falls under this category as well. So, you have the goal, our action is to implement those plans through the development code.
My favorite, recreational needs. This seems to outline that Oregon wants people to be able to enjoy recreation. We accomplish this through our Parks Master Plan, Trail Master Plan, creating parks, creating trails for people to enjoy, which the goals 5 and 6 tie in a lot in preserving those natural spaces and the quality, so that recreation can be enjoyed. Also, something like the Lebanon High School Swimming Pool for community enjoyment, tennis courts in the parks, basketball courts, all of our baseball fields, which I've been getting to look at all week. Pretty straightforward. We set forth all our park control plans to ensure that people can enjoy recreation within the city. And that is what the state wants for all of its municipalities, is for Oregonians to be able to go out and enjoy nature and the sun, when it's sunny here.
And this is something that we're actually actively working on right now. One of the reasons why we applied for the RARE program to have John work with us is to update the Parks Master Plan. Right now, we are in the research and inventory phase. Eventually, we'll move into the citizen involvement phase as required for the planning goals. And so, we will be asking members of the Trees and Trails Commission to participate in that, as well as members of the public. If any of you are interested, let us know. If anybody loves to use the parks and has any interest. One of the things that's come up as part of the update of the Parks Master Plan is, we really want to be able to develop an outreach program for the citizen involvement to get a wide swath of voices to be heard. And so, if anybody knows people that actively use the parks and wants to talk to us about how the parks are used or what they feel is missing, having those direct points of communication and contact are helpful. So, feel free to give them our contact information. But trying to find new ways to have that public involvement beyond just putting an ad in the newspaper to say, come to a workshop, and then having the same 30 people who go to every workshop and every council meeting. We want to try to broaden our horizons with that. But that's currently in the process of being updated as well.
The schools, where you get the majority of, those are families with small children, that visit those. Plugging that in with the PTAs or their Tuesday folders or Thursday folders or whatnot.
That's a credit.
To kind of get that word out there, that you're looking for those voices, because that's where you're wanting them to come from, you're drawing that from, mainly families that use those.
That's a great idea. Perfect. Our city employees, they manage, is it the city that manages parks in that? We maintain the parks. Maintain, yeah. We do not provide, we do not have a Parks and Recreation District or Department. So, we do not program the parks, we do not provide events for the parks. Those are through outside agencies and nonprofit organizations. But we maintain them, and then when people want to use the parks for AOSO or baseball events, we work hand-in-hand with them to make sure that we maintain the parks in a manner that is useful for those types of events as well.
Do you require, when you build new subdivisions and stuff like, say, the south side, when you do that, do you require parks to be built in those areas?
So, the state lays out that there should be, within so much population density and space, they should have access to parks in these spaces. So, there, I don't want to necessarily quote, say, requirements, because there's
There's guidelines.
That's the best I can put it in. Because there's always understanding what is feasible and what they desire.
And through the Parks Master Plan, we anticipate population growth where that population growth is anticipated. Through subdivisions and through development applications, we do not require them to dedicate portions of their land for park purposes, but they do pay what's called a system development charge for parks that we can then put towards acquisition of additional property to develop new parks. Correct.
Goal 9, economic development. I will try not to speak too much on this, since it's beyond my realm of understanding. But this is basically lays out that communities should be focused on developing their own economies. And the comprehensive plan addresses this, and lists that we include analyses of economic patterns and strengths. And we're currently working on an economic opportunity analysis that falls within this, on where we can grow and improve. And we've had previous things, such as the Eco Northwest, buildable lands inventory, on what lands we could develop to strengthen the economy in Lebanon, methodology such as that.
So, we've given plenty of examples about housing and how you need to provide housing for all. The economic development is, you should try to and strive to provide opportunities for job creation for all, and businesses to support the population and create that balance. So, that's the economic development goal. Through the economic opportunity analysis, we evaluate the availability of land for creation of industrial jobs or commercial jobs, how much that land can yield towards potential job creation, whether or not we have enough land and reusable space available, much like you would do an analysis for buildable land for housing, and whether or not you need to amend your development code for that. You do a very similar process on the economic development front, and for job creation and the economic opportunity analysis, to identify buildable lands and availability of that land to expand job opportunities for the residents that you are growing within the population. And so, this is a great example to say, all of these goals are tied together to ensure that a city is providing an appropriate framework for its residents to have a to ensure that a city is providing an appropriate framework for its residents to have a quality of life is ultimately what it ties down to, and it's nitty gritty. So you have to think about how you're, you have to have citizen involvement to know that you, as the professionals and as the planning commission, are implementing what the citizens need and feel is needed for their community to have quality of life. And you have to do all of these different things and consider all of these different goals to ensure that the quality of life as identified by the general population of Oregon is being met. The economic development is that next step associated with that for job creation.
Goal ten is housing, but I feel like we covered that extensively. In general, we provide equitable opportunity of housing and discussed our housing needs analysis and the production strategy that will be coming about with the next couple of years on how Lebanon will be achieving that.
The one thing to add on to this is if anybody picks up a newspaper nowadays, if anybody pays any attention to the state right now, housing is a huge hot topic issue. Everybody talks about the need for housing, everybody talks about the fact that we're running very short on production of housing. And so the state has, in 2019, implemented a bunch of different housing rules and requirements. The housing needs analysis is one of them for cities over the population of ten thousand, which we are. We need to go a step further, as required by the state, to put together a housing production strategy, which is not only you need to provide these housing through this needs analysis or opportunities for this housing, but what are you, as a city, going to do to incentivize the construction of this needed housing? And so it's not just a, "I can't go to the public and say, 'Yeah, we have had a lot of apartments, units, let's just stop that for now.'" The state really is sitting there saying, "No, you need to provide the housing that is dictated per the housing needs assessment, and you need to provide incentives and further opportunities to ensure that housing is being produced." And so there is going to be a process. We just got our grants awarded to us this last week and a half to say that we now have, the state is financing our housing production strategy. And so in the next couple of months, in next year, we are going to be having an ad hoc committee to work through the housing production strategy process to meet the requirements of this goal. So one thing that you can talk to the public about when there is a level of frustration over what type of housing is being produced, aside from the very long-winded answer I gave earlier, it's we legally have to, to be able to meet the requirements of the state. So blame it on them.
Running up the ladder.
Any questions about that aspect? The incentive that we are providing is that the city of Lebanon is incredibly quick and efficient in our processing of requests for development permits and evaluation of those permits. We do have system development charges for housing that is on a graduated scale that's been implemented. So if you're providing smaller housing units for single-family homes, and this is specific for single-family homes, then you can get a reduced system development charge. Beyond that, it's, we're very clear and concise of what you need to be able to develop and clear and concise in our process and quick in our process. And that may be enough, but I doubt it.
I feel like we've gotten comments before of how nice, like builders prefer to deal with the city of Lebanon compared to other communities around, maybe specifically challenged.
I think the city of Lebanon recognizes that we need to be efficient so that we can be lean in our staffing, because we want to be, you know, efficient with our city's funds. And we recognize, as have been conversations at the planning commission, that there's property rights. And if you meet the development code, there's no reason for us to stand in the way of that. And so long as the development code is the path in which the city has identified that it wants to move forward, we're going to implement that development code and just move on and get it done. Other cities have different opinions, and I'm not saying it's right or wrong, but we do have the reputation of it's easier from here. And that was a slogan that was created specifically by the city to promote economic development, to promote development within the city. So we have made it easier from here. Exactly. Yeah. Yeah, there you go. We have beat housing to death. Does anybody have any other questions about it?
Moving through, quick speed. Public facilities, services, and transportation. Essentially, this is just stating that the state requires us to provide encouraged, convenient, safe, economic transportation in public facilities. It comes down to our comprehensive plan outlining our storm drainage master plans, transportation system plans, and then us developing roads and arterial corridors and working with the ODT to spread information when there's incidents or events. We've all seen roadwork, so we know that it's happening, or experienced it.
This is the additional layer of we need to provide the services to the residents. So you're definitely going to come yelling at us if your toilets are backed up because there's a sewer problem. We provide the sewer service so that you can have toilets in your household. That's a requirement of the city. The water treatment plant that was built in 2016, 17, something like that, that's a new facility that we needed to be able to provide these services that are required for us by the state. And we need to provide healthy drinking water for quality of life for our residents. So, nice thing, and to go back to that, I'm not going to switch sides, but as part of that, developers have to pay their fair share. If you're going to develop on the fringe of the city and the utilities aren't there, yes, the city has a requirement to provide utility services, but a developer has a requirement to extend those services to their site. So it's not just a every single, this is important for the public to know that just because a development goes in doesn't mean that the city is paying for the utility services to be extended to that development. It is simply, we are providing the service for those developments to connect to, but you need to pay to be connected to it, you need to put in the infrastructure to be connected to it. So we provide that service, but you've got to pay to play, basically.
But anyways, energy conservation. Essentially, this is just focused on Oregon's goals to work on energy conservation. And for Lebanon and our comp plan, it's really focused on working towards energy efficiency, especially within our public buildings and supporting development that is energy efficient in new developments for apartments or homes that are being built, or new businesses, and working on updating the existing structures so that they can conserve energy and generally conserve money. And everyone's happier with more money in their pocket.
Do we have a, is there a plan for solar and that kind of, am I asking a wrong question?
No.
For energy conservation, does the city have something in place that they allow for solar? Or, I mean, I see a few structures that have it, but.
Absolutely. So the new veterans home that went up off of Airport Road, every single apartment building has solar that's been installed on it that, from what the developer said, basically provides enough solar energy to run the building. We, as a city, through our development code, have not implemented requirements for solar or wind energy or alternative energies we use. Sure. The statewide planning goal is to try to conserve energy and have land use development that can maximize that conservative energy. The city's comprehensive plan has identified that we are going to put that responsibility on the city facilities. So as city facilities are updated and built, we have to have a higher level of energy efficiency associated with that. And we encourage it upon the development of new developments. They need to meet. Yeah, and building code itself already dictates a pretty high efficiency requirement for building construction. So just by the mandated building codes, you're already getting an energy efficiency out of any new construction.
Seems pretty straightforward. It's just focused on making sure that urbanization and the growth of cities is orderly and efficient, contains strongly with the existence of the urban growth boundary and what cities can and cannot take and develop, and limiting how cities grow. So the easiest and best way to discuss this with the comp plan is how Lebanon has the urban growth boundary and the, for example, the land that we can trade off and expand in ways that we can develop in an efficient manner.
Let's keep going.
No, I mean, that's essentially it. It's just focused on making sure that you're not developing wildly and without a plan.
The important part of this is the relationship and the responsibility between the city and the county. So we have the city limits, and then we have our urban growth boundary. As you all can probably tell, even with the new commissioners, there's plenty of land that is completely undeveloped within our urban growth boundary that's not within our city limits. So that falls under the jurisdiction of Lynn County for its land use regulation. But through the Urban Growth Management Agreement between Lynn County and the city, Lynn County cannot establish any zoning rules or zoning requirements that would be contradictory to what the city's urban growth boundary and urban growth comprehensive plan designation for that property is. So if our designation for that property in Lynn County, but in our urban growth boundary, is zoned or designated for residential mixed density, Lynn County cannot go and improve an industrial complex to be established on that property. They have to be consistent with our comprehensive plan. And so that's the crux and the most important part of the urbanization rule is that we have to work together as the county and the city. And then it dictates, you know, we can't go and annex a property that's ten properties away from the city limits without annexing in the nine properties that are closer. You have to be contiguous to the city limits to be able to annex.
When was the last time our urban growth boundary was expanded?
It has never been expanded from its original inception in the 1980s. And I don't.
How difficult is it to expand it?
It's incredibly difficult to expand it. And we are not in any position where we would need to expand it in the next twenty years. Unless something absolutely changes that's unforeseen, I don't see us having to expand it. We have plenty of land that is available for development for both job creation and for housing. We just need to figure out how to unlock that land, whether it's wet from wetlands or whether or not there's an infrastructure there now. We just need to be able to unlock that land for that development, rather than try to expand the UGV. Yeah, and so we've already expanded the water system, right? The original water treatment plant was just down here off of Maine. We went and built a brand-new water treatment plant off of River Road area. And so we built that specifically so that that facility can expand its capacity to be able to clean water at an efficient rate for all future expansions expected through the life of that facility. But yeah, eventually, you know, wastewater treatment plants are going to have to be updated or expanded. And, you know, utility lines are going to have to be extended to properties that it currently doesn't have, which will add capacity for these facilities to have to treat the water or the waste to be able to discharge it.
A quick wrap-up. Basically, the state has their planning goals, and our city has a comprehensive plan. And the goals of the city fall in line with those statewide planning goals, and it is actually required that they do. I'm not going to say the acronym. LCDC. Never going to get it right. LCDC actually checks each comprehensive plan to ensure that they do before they're approved. And then from that comprehensive plan, we have our development code and our zoning code, management plans, stormwater plans that implement the policies outlined. And all that, I like to think of as like a little Russian nesting doll. They all fit into one another and work together that way. I don't know specific details though.
And that's the land use planning system in Oregon. You have anything to add down there, City Team? You're fine. Do you guys have any questions? Has this been useful? Do you want us to just stop talking?
I find it really interesting.
That's good, because the important part is, over the next couple of years, we are going to be embarking on updating sections of the comprehensive plan. The housing needs assessment is first. The studies associated with that and the document of that was done just before I got here. And then COVID happened. And so now we're going to dust that document off, which is still valid, and all of the appropriate data is up to date. And so we are going to go through the process of formally adopting that. And the state has set forth requirements that cities, once we adopt a housing needs assessment, we will be on an eight-year cycle. And so you have to update that housing needs assessment every eight years to make sure that you're still within your margin of error, or whether or not you need to start thinking about planning for additions, or you can loosen things up. That's the first step. We are also going to be updating and producing the housing production strategy as required by state law now. We are going to be, and that, once we complete those and any suggestions that come out of those, we'll have to do amendments to the development code possibly to address that. Once that's done, we will adopt those as an update to the housing chapter of our comprehensive plan. You then have our economic opportunity analysis, which we have applied for a grant. We'll see if we get, knock on wood, hope so, which will then adopt the economic development section of the comprehensive plan. We are updating the Parks Master Plan, and once we've completed that, that will update the recreation section of the comprehensive plan. And then we'll overall do just a generalized evaluation of, these are the key important things that have had to be updated to address the significant changes that have occurred in the city. Are there further things that we feel need to be addressed beyond that? And then we'll be able to say, although we haven't done a full comprehensive update, we've updated the sections that have had the significant changes. And then we can identify that as a comprehensive plan update. We will be compliant with our requirements for the state. We will have evaluated the new things that are going on in the city. Western University was not even a thing the last time we did a comprehensive plan update, and that has significantly changed the way that our city has grown. And so those are some things that we need to capture and change within that. And so this tells you the framework under how we're going to be moving forward in the next year and a half or so to do those updates. So it'll be a busy time. Any other questions?
Did you say the maps and stuff, just for frame of reference, are on the website?
They are, and I can also email them to you.
Hey, no, it's, I just wanted to.
Well, then that has officially concluded what has been on the agenda for this evening. Are there any planning commission? Are there any Planning Commission comments or questions? We will have a meeting in November for the new proposed ordinance for the fueling station based off of all the work sessions that we've done. And that is the only item that we have currently planned. We do know of a couple of them that are in pipeline for the December meeting, though. So do let us know. I know that it's holiday season, so if any of you think you're not going to be able to make any of those meetings, let me know ahead of time so we can make sure we have a forum. Other than that?
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Well, since we didn't start the meeting, we can't adjourn it.
Let's call it adjourned.